Now that we've clarified that, now I'm going to go through some of our anniversary celebrations. We have 69 people in the district celebrating a milestone anniversary in the school district. We have 45 people celebrating 20 years. And it's not an exact science, some are just a little short of 20, some are a little beyond 20 years at this point with the school district. But we have 45 individuals celebrating 20 years in the school district. We have another 19 individuals who are celebrating their 25th anniversary with the Yorktown Central School District. And we have five more individuals who are celebrating 30 years with our school district. We also have 15 retirees that we will be recognizing this evening. And I look forward to saying a few words about each of our retirees. In the aggregate, our 15 retirees have over 330 years in the Yorktown Central School District. That is an impressive, incredible feat, and I'm so honored to call each of our retirees a colleague. With that said, I'm going to begin by acknowledging those in our school district who are celebrating their 20th anniversary in the Yorktown schools. So I will go in school building order, and then I will also recognize those in central office who are being recognized for this milestone. So 20 years in the Yorktown Central School District, beginning with Brookside School. And there are five faculty and staff members at Brookside School who are celebrating their 20th anniversary. And that is Lorraine Ahern, Barbara Bernstein, who are both Certified Teaching Assistance, Michelle Purpera, Moira Schnecker, and Jennifer Stroud. Congratulations to you. What a wonderful, wonderful accomplishment. I look forward to many, many more years in the Yorktown Central School District. At Crompond School, now some of the individuals who are celebrating milestone anniversary are also retiring from the district. So while I will acknowledge their milestone anniversary, I'm also going to say a few words when we get to the retiree portion of the program. So at Crompond School, we have several faculty and staff who are celebrating their 20th anniversary with the school district. Certified Teaching Assistant Liz Eagle, Teachers Barbara Lessie, Linda Arco, Joseph Longabardi, and Karen Richards, and David Zeiler. Congratulations to our colleagues at Crompond School celebrating 20 wonderful years in Yorktown. At Mildred East Strang Middle School, I'm sorry, at Mohansick School, we have three faculty and staff members who are celebrating their 20th anniversary. Lori Rampah, Certified Teaching Assistant in our kindergarten, Jan Banks, who is at Mohansick, and Lauren Randdecker. Congratulations on 20 wonderful years. At Mildred East Strang Middle School, we have quite enough faculty who are... Yvette, if I can just ask you to mute. Perfect, thank you. At Mildred East Strang Middle School. Faculty and staff members who are celebrating 20 years within the school district.
Just trying to find who it is.
And if I can ask that everybody just remain muted with their microphones for the time being. It would be most abbreviated, so it doesn't take like...
I'm not finding who it is, I'm sorry.
All right, so we'll continue moving forward. At Mildred East Strang Middle School, as Yvette's looking for any unmuted microphones, we have Cleaner Anthony Abruzzi celebrating 20 with the school district. We have Teacher Madeline Campbell, Lynn Concepcion, Paul Dorito, Veronica Hildinger, Deborah Lewis, Vicky Lakowski, Lisa Morella, Deborah Potter, Arlene Rasulo. And we have Head Custodian at the middle school, Tom Dunning. An impressive list of colleagues in the school district celebrating 20 years at Mildred East Strang Middle School. Congratulations to you. At Yorktown High School, we have an extraordinary list of faculty and staff who are celebrating their 20th year in the district. And that list of faculty and staff include Jim Barry, Geraldine Broccoli, Sam Contreras, Gus Egan, Karen Firestone, Ryan Fritz, Michelle Harris, Erica Knapp, Dan Lopez, Michelle Monaco, Mike Resigno, Roberta Seas, Andrea Servetio, Tim Sullivan, Steve Theperry, Bela Biswannathan, and School Counselor Marissa Warren. A wonderful, wonderful list of colleagues celebrating 20 years in the Yorktown schools tonight. Congratulations to all of our 20-year anniversary celebrations in the school buildings. We have some additional individuals who are celebrating their 20th anniversary with the school district who are not in a specific school building, and that's Kathy Rodriguez, who is in our Human Resources Department, and Rose Milan, who is a teacher aide, and our very own Assistant Superintendent for Business, Tom Cole, celebrating 20 years with the Yorktown schools. Congratulations to my colleagues at District Office. And now we'll move to those who are celebrating their 25th year in the Yorktown Central School District. There are 19 colleagues who are celebrating 25 years in our school district. We'll begin with Brookside, Certified Teaching Assistant Linda Bellinger, and Teachers Dimitri Giatrakis and Mike Boat. Congratulations, Brookside faculty and staff, 25 years in the Yorktown Central School District. At Crompond Elementary School, we have two faculty and staff members, three, I'm sorry, who are celebrating their 25th anniversary. Congratulations to Joan Shylan and Bruce Thompson, as well as Certified Teaching Assistant Susan Taylor. Congratulations to our colleagues at Crompond celebrating 25 years tonight. At Mohansick Elementary School, we have one faculty member who is celebrating a 25th anniversary in the school district, and that is Teacher Ellen Weiner. Congratulations, Ellen. At Mildred East Strang Middle School, we have five colleagues who are celebrating their 25th anniversary. And Teacher Aide Jeanette Weiss, as well as Teachers Gary Kittredge, Liz Kennedy, Carrie DeAngelo, and Laura Rand, 25 years in the district. Congratulations to our middle school colleagues. And for 25 years at Yorktown High School, we have five faculty and staff members, three Certified Teaching Assistants, Rosemarie Bizarro, Linda Semels and Linda Sarah, and two teachers, Jennifer Aestrab, Brian Denny, forgive me, one more teacher, Rich Armstrong. Congratulations to our Yorktown High School colleagues. Also, in the Buildings and Grounds Department, we have Adam Smith, who is a maintenance mechanic in our O&M Department, celebrating 25 years in the Yorktown schools. Congratulations to Adam. And finally, we have our colleagues who are celebrating their 30th anniversary in the Yorktown Central School District. We have five colleagues who have achieved that milestone, and they are representing four of our five schools this evening. From Mohansick, Liz Kelsey is celebrating her 30th anniversary with the Yorktown Central School District. Congratulations to Liz. At Crompond, we have two colleagues who are celebrating their 30th anniversary in the school district, and it's Teacher May Jacobs and Head Custodian Jimmy Seville. Congratulations to our Crompond colleagues. At Mildred East Strang Middle School, we have Teacher Jill Proskyn celebrating 30th anniversary at the middle school. Congratulations to Jill on this wonderful milestone. And finally, at Yorktown High School, we have Trish Calhoun, teacher, celebrating 30th anniversary in the district. Congratulations, Trish. Absolutely wonderful, wonderful milestone. So happy for you. Congratulations to all of our colleagues, and what this demonstrates for the teachers who are just starting their careers in the Yorktown School District. It's a wonderful place to work. It's a wonderful place to advance your career. It's a wonderful place to be a colleague, to be a mentor, to be a friend. And as you look to your colleagues who are celebrating these milestone anniversaries this evening as mentors and colleagues and friends, many years from now, you will be those who are being honored. You will be the mentor, as opposed to the mentee. You will be the senior and veteran colleague on the grade level or within the department. And I hope that you can take from the wisdom of the colleagues being recognized today and share that wisdom with the generation of teachers to come in our school district. Thank you so much to those who are celebrating these milestone anniversaries. You have left your fingerprints on our district. You have made us better. And our students are the greatest beneficiaries, so I thank you. And now we're going to transition to our retiree recognition ceremony. So I don't know if Lorraine Ahern is here. Is Lorraine on the call? So with Lorraine, I just want to share a couple of words. I'm not sure if Lorraine is on the call. Congratulations, first and foremost, 20 years of service to the Yorktown Central School District. Lorraine has spent her years working with students having very exceptional education needs in an 8-1-2 classroom setting. Throughout her years at Brookside, she's always been a leader and has taken on a leadership role in the capacity of Certified Teaching Assistant. And we are sad to see Lorraine go. We wish Lorraine very well in the next chapter of life. But we thank her for her years of service. Congratulations, Lorraine. At Mohansick School, for anyone who has had the honor of going into the main office, you're greeted by a very friendly face, and that friendly face is the voice behind some of the announcements. That friendly face is a very big fan of Disney and all things Disney, and it's Diane Bushell, who is the Administrative Assistant in the main office. And Diane is going to be leaving Mohansick School after 23 years of service to the district. I personally will miss our conversations that we've had so many different times and the different insider information that I can get about Disney and how to avoid all the lines and all of the good places to visit while visiting Disney. So I will miss Diane. Mohansick will miss Diane, and certainly the Yorktown Central School District will miss Diane. Diane, congratulations to you. Jimmy Seville can't make it today, but Jimmy is the Head Custodian at Crompond Elementary School. And I just want to say a few words, although Jimmy's not in the audience this evening. When we started, we had some substantial turnover in our custodial staff. We had people retire from the district, and we hired a new wonderful group of custodians, and we wanted to start a mentor program. The first person who came to mind was Jimmy Seville to lead a mentor program for our district. Jimmy's so talented. He takes such pride in his work, and it shows in every aspect. Each August, the board and I walk through the school buildings to be prepared, and Crompond always shines because of Jimmy's attention to detail. We will miss him. Crompond will miss him. Congratulations, Jimmy. The next teacher I will speak about is Crompond School 5th Grade Teacher Barbara Lessie. And Ms. Lessie is retiring from the district after 20 years of service. Barbara, we will miss you. Barbara is truly a gifted teacher, from the learning targets at the beginning of class to the exit tickets to assess learning at the end of class, and then every moment in between. It becomes very evident, the skill that Ms. Lessie brings to her students. She has broadened her repertoire with students using Scratch, presenting a biography project in a different and innovative way using Google Website and webpages, breakout rooms, Tinkercad to introduce 3D printing, and remote learning did not slow down that effort. I was so impressed to see some of the wonderful, wonderful technologies that were integrated into Ms. Lessie's practice during remote instruction. We will certainly miss Ms. Lessie in the classroom. We will certainly miss her as a colleague and all that she brought to Crompond Elementary School. She participated in so many different aspects of the Crompond School community, whether it was the Social Committee, the Wellness Committee, the Moving Update Committee, the Student Government Committee Advisor, the Literacy Committee, or just attending so many different events to be further part of the school community. We will miss Barbara. Barbara, congratulations, and we wish you well in the next chapter of your career in life. The next teacher that we'll recognize, again Crompond Elementary School teacher, is Ms. Beth Cresimano. Ms. Cresimano is the enrichment teacher, but is also an advisor of the Destination Imagination Club, which is one that is very special to me and special to so many of us. We applaud Ms. Cresimano's efforts in organizing virtual programs through IBM, through Watson Laboratories, and bringing the virtual science research program to our students. What a wonderful opportunity for our Crompond students. Ms. Cresimano assisted with our new math program, Into Math. She assisted in our e Scheme efforts and enriching the program for so many students throughout her career. Ms. Cresimano leaves Yorktown with several years of experience, 21 to be exact. We will miss her. Crompond will miss her. Beth, congratulations to you. We really wish you well in the next stage. Congratulations. At the middle school, we have some dear colleagues who are departing for retirement. I'll begin by acknowledging Michael Getz. Michael Getz also works at Crompond as the orchestra teacher and is also at the middle school. And Mr. Getz's concerts never cease to amaze me. I've visited his classes several times. I hear beautiful music, and I somehow just end up sitting in the back of the classroom admiring the beautiful music that he and students create. As I attend the concerts, I see several things. I see a gifted musician. I see someone who really knows how to teach music to children, and I see someone who loves children. It comes through during the concerts. It comes through as Mr. Getz is addressing parents in the audience. I will miss Mr. Getz tremendously. He's just... And for those who know Mr. Getz, I think you understand exactly what I'm saying. The impact that he has had on our school district is profound. He develops our young musicians so that they may be really excellent high school musicians and compete at all different levels. So I commend Mr. Getz for all the work that he has done during his 23 years in the Yorktown Central School District, and I wish Mr. Getz and his family well in the next journey, next stage of their journey. Congratulations. The next individual I will honor, and that we will honor, is 6th Grade Social Studies and Core Teacher Deborah Potter. Deb is one of the kindest people I have met. I've enjoyed our interactions. I've enjoyed meeting Deb Potter. I've enjoyed learning from her. We've sat around tables in meetings, and she's just such a terrific thinker and such a terrific person. What I believe is most impressive in my conversations with Mrs. Harwich, Middle School Principal, and in my conversations with other colleagues, what I admire most about Ms. Potter is how reflective of a practitioner that she is. Ms. Potter has been in the Yorktown Central School District for 20 years now. And after 20 years, Ms. Potter is the definition of a lifelong learner. And that is very evident as I read through observation reports, as I read through reflections that are submitted. There's this unending desire to continuously improve and to try new things and to enrich the experience of our students. And that has stuck with me, and that has had a profound impact on me. I commend Ms. Potter for this dedication, this profound and sincere dedication to our students. It's impressive, and it's not unnoticed. Ms. Potter, thank you so much for your dedication to our students. So greatly appreciated. On behalf of all of my colleagues, we wish you very, very well in the next stages of life. Congratulations to you, Deb.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deb. It really has been an honor and a pleasure to be a colleague for you all, albeit a short amount of time. Thank you. The next retiree that I would like to honor is Jeanette Weiss. Jeanette has spent 25 years as a Certified Teaching Assistant in the Yorktown Central School District. What I really enjoyed was going into the middle school, seeing a very friendly face and a very knowledgeable face and a comforting face, knowing that our buildings were secured. Jeanette knew everything that was happening in the building on a daily basis and just a wonderful, wonderful person to interact with. Terrific conversations, very competent in the work that she was doing, and so versatile in the assignments where we could have her placed. I really admire Jeanette. She's done just such a tremendous job, 25 years, and I'd love to have Jeanette in our district for another 25 years. Congratulations, Jeanette. We wish you and your family very well. Now, the individual who has the longest tenure in the school district is Benetta Vieira. Benetta works in the nurse's office at Mildred East Strang Middle School. Benetta is kind, honest, will tell you exactly what is on her mind, and she will share that with you. And but so kind and so empathetic and very sweet. I always enjoy my conversations with Benetta, whether it's by phone or whether I'm stopping into the office to say hello or to see Mrs. Epstein or to attend to a meeting in the nurse's office. Benetta will be missed in our school district. She can always make me laugh, so regardless of how my day was going, Benetta could always make me laugh. What a terrific colleague, what a terrific person that Benetta is. And 31 years in the Yorktown Central School District, so congratulations to Benetta. Congratulations to Benetta. We wish Benetta well in the next stages of life. We have six colleagues at Yorktown High School who are retiring at the end of this school year. One of those colleagues is Custodian Steve Abruzzi. Stephen has spent 17 years with the Yorktown Central School District, has really done a fine job in all of the tasks that he has undertaken in his leadership as a custodian and his leadership with the clerical, I'm sorry, the custodial unit. Just a great colleague, great person, very committed to the building, very proud of the work that he does in the building, and we wish him and his family well. Congratulations, Steve. The next retiree that we'll recognize is Linda Semels, Certified Teaching Assistant, Yorktown High School. What I think impresses me most, as I was preparing to say a few remarks about Linda, is the versatility that Linda has demonstrated within our organization. She did a fine job with the younger students at Crompond and then transitioned to our older students at Yorktown High School and did equally as great of a job. That versatility is rare, and that versatility is impressive. And that versatility in an organization as big as ours is really appreciated. Linda, thank you so much. 25 years of service to the Yorktown Central School District, and we certainly appreciate all of your contributions over the years. Congratulations to you. We also have four teachers who are retiring from Yorktown High School. Chemistry teacher Kevin Mulaney is retiring after 18 years in the Yorktown schools. Kevin has done a wonderful job, and our science department has been just a great source of inspiration for so many, always very kind, always very attuned to his students and what our students need. A phenomenal chemistry teacher. When you talk about bringing science to life, that's synonymous with Kevin Mulaney. So Kevin, we wish you well. We're sad to see you go. We absolutely are sad to see you go. And congratulations, best of luck in the next set of your journey. Karen Firestone is a business teacher at Yorktown High School and will be leaving the district after 20 years of service. We thank Karen for all of her efforts. She really has done a remarkable job in offering so many different business classes, advising clubs to be further involved in the Yorktown High School community. Karen was so visible and so present throughout so many different aspects of the day, whether it was advising the finance club or whether it was teaching her classes or being present at events. We thank Karen for her commitment to the Yorktown Central School District, certainly to Yorktown High School. And Karen, congratulations. We wish you well. Jim Barry is also retiring from the Yorktown Central School District after 20 years. Jim is a math teacher at Yorktown High School. Again, the versatility of Jim instructionally is what impresses me most. Jim has been able to work with the alternative high school as well as in Yorktown High School, and that is from somebody who has done that formerly as a math teacher in an alternative setting. That is a really impressive feat, and Jim, you have my respect. You have my appreciation. You have all of our appreciation. We thank you for your years of service. 20 years at Yorktown High School, Jim. Congratulations to you, and we wish you well. And finally, Michael Blueglass. After 19 years at Yorktown High School, we say goodbye to Michael Blueglass. Michael is certainly a science teacher first, but he is also the head of our science research program here at Yorktown High School. And Michael has invested so much time, nights, weekends, summers, holidays. Michael doesn't take a day off. Michael is always working. And he has built our science research program to an internationally recognized science research program. Yorktown has, I would argue, the best science research program in the region, in the state. And that's not by circumstance. That's not an accidental achievement. That's because we have someone at the helm who is so invested in our students and in the program and in the success of our students in the program. Michael will be missed. There is no replacing a Michael Blueglass. We will certainly miss Michael. I will miss the times that Michael has come into my office, closed the door, and said, "Do you have a minute?" And we, 30 minutes later, the conversation would conclude. So, Michael, not only did I have a minute, I had 29 minutes, 30 minutes, or whatever it was, to have our conversations, and I will miss that. Michael, thank you so much. Yorktown High School is not where it is in its science research program without you, so thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
To our retirees, I would like to invite you back. I would like to invite you back Wednesday, November 25th. I believe that's the day before Thanksgiving, where we have a reunion with our students. So if you can pencil that date in to your calendars, we'd love to have you back so that we can give you a proper send-off. After 20, and 25, and 30, and 31 years in the school district, we'd love to... After 20 and 25 and 30 and 31 years in the school district, we'd love to be able to say goodbye and congratulations in person. Unfortunately, that's not the circumstance that we have today, but I'm hoping by November we will have that opportunity. Retirees, 15 retirees totaling over 330 years in our school district. Your commitment to Yorktown has been unwavering, absolutely unwavering and immeasurable. Thank you for always putting children first and for being role models for your colleagues. With that, Linda, I see that you unmuted yourself.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Should I mute myself again?
No, I thought you were going to just be recognized.
Oh, no, no, no. I didn't, I didn't get unmuted when you were speaking about me. So thank you for your kind words.
Well, thank you for 25 years.
You're welcome. I'll mute it now.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, with that, Ms. Carbone, I will turn the meeting back over to you. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you to our board certainly for recognizing our retirees and anniversary celebrants this evening.
We are, um, thank you for presenting them. We're so proud of them and we wish all of our retirees well. We wish they didn't go. A lot of them, we'd like them to stay. And the significant anniversaries, I think, attest to the strength of the Yorktown School. So we thank everybody for their service. So thank you all very much. We're going to go on to public comment. Yvette, did anybody put in public comment for us?
No, I did not receive any.
Okay, so we're going to turn it right back over to Ron for his year-end update.
Okay, very good. So I will give just a very brief report. I've already taken so much time. For our retirees after the year-end update, you're welcome to stay on for the meetings and for the remainder of the meeting, for those who have other commitments this evening. We completely understand that as well, but you are welcome to stay on if you'd like. With regard to the end of year update, the remote part of our instructional plan has winded down. That concluded on Friday. We thank our teachers, our faculty and staff for transitioning from a brick and mortar format that has existed in that way for over 100 years to remote learning in a day. And I'm just in awe of what they were able to do. It wasn't perfect, nor did I expect it to be perfect when we made this transition, but we certainly made progress. Our students were learning and we're learning wonderful things. Thank you to the families in our school community. I'm so proud of what our students were able to accomplish. I'm so proud of the support that they received both in school and at home. It's just been a difficult, difficult time, but everyone working toward a common interest, which is our students. We're planning for the reopening for the coming school year. We are still awaiting guidance from the state, from the governor's office, from the health department as to the parameters for the reopening, but we will be ready. We will be prepared regardless of the platform that we need to be on. I'm hoping it's face-to-face, in-person schooling. But if it needs to be remote or some hybrid model, we'll be prepared for that as well. So that is an open item for us this summer, heading into the summer. We certainly will be spending a lot of time planning for the reopening of schools and more information as it becomes available. We're awaiting some guidance from the state. We hope to have that a week or two weeks' time is my hope so that we can begin to advance our planning. With regard to this week, this week, while our students are catching up on assignments and working asynchronously and reading and doing all of the things that students would do in an asynchronous learning environment, our faculty and staff are engaged in some wonderful workshops, professional development meetings. We have seminars throughout the week on cultural awareness and equity and we're very proud of the robust program that we put forth this week. Our faculty and staff are engaged in articulation meetings and planning for the coming school year and placements of students and all of the other really, really important things that go with closing down a school year and preparing for the restart of another school year. So although we're not physically in the school buildings, all of that work continues to happen and it continues to happen in a remote setting. We are also going to be offering a hybrid E S Y program, an extended school year program. The governor gave us the option of offering an in-person program. As I noted in my letter from Friday of last week, that as we put pen to paper, while we were excited to be able to offer our students an in-person option, the logistics that have to be carried out and have to be implemented according to the State Department of Health and the State Education Department presented quite a challenge, but we are pleased that we are going to be able to offer some in-person component for our students. We felt that that would be extremely important to our students. So we will be proceeding with that. Mr. Rosen will be sharing more information as that comes about. For our team at central office, for our board, on a personal note, I just want to thank you. This has been such a challenging year. I'm trying to recalibrate the definition of normal in terms of a normal school year. It's been such a challenge for us as a school district. I go back to my first year and practically shut the month of March because we had four nor'easters that devastated our community, took out power for weeks in some areas. And last year, we have the Bauman bus fire to set us back and that took their depot offline for the entire remainder of the school year. And I remember being with Mr. Cole and Ms. Sauber through the wee hours of the morning, committed to not closing schools the following day and we were able to keep schools open. And then the pandemic certainly upended our school year. So we are, I'm trying to recalibrate this concept of normal and understanding what a normal school year may look like. But while not easy, while certainly a challenge, the support has been phenomenal. I thank the Board of Education. I thank my immediate team. Certainly Tom Cole, Lisa O'Shea, our central office cabinet members, our building administration, our faculty staff, the clerical employees who are always willing to assist, the CTA's and TAs who are always willing to give up their time, our custodial unit, O and M unit, who no task is too great to ask of any of the individuals working in our school district. And it's not unnoticed, it's acknowledged, it's appreciated. And I thank you for all of the support that you provided throughout this school year. And we're really looking forward to a wonderful school year come September, however that may look. Jackie, thank you so much.
Thank you. Board reports. Start with policy. Cheryl?
I have nothing new for any updates at this time.
Fresh meat audit?
Nothing new. We will continue to work over the summer with the internal auditor and also the external auditor.
Mike, fiscal advisory?
Just want to thank everyone for voting on the budget and passing our budget. We worked really hard on that and I think it was a good budget. So thank you all for that. We don't have anything else scheduled right now.
Okay. Steering, we are continuing with Brookside and Mohansick construction. And we are going to restart our discussions regarding the air conditioning in the large spaces of the school buildings, the gym renovations in the high school and depending on what happens to some with the governor, we don't know whether there'll be some issues we have to deal with facilities-wise based upon reopening the school. Correct, Ron?
That is absolutely correct.
All right, so we'll just keep going on. We're going to go up to board action items. Can I have a motion to accept the treasures report for April and May of 2020?
So moved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to accept the claims audit report for March, April and May of 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Oppose. A motion to accept the extra classroom activity reports for May 2020 and the year-to-date extra classroom activity report.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed. Personnel, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have appointments. We have the 2020 extended year program. We have the 2020 remedial reading program and other compensation. We have extra duty. We have teaching stipends that have been rescinded and we have two resignations for the purpose of retirement. Lorraine Ahern and Linda Semels. Under classified personnel, we have the 2019, I believe it's 20 extended year program. We have addition to the substitute list, a volunteer and a change in stipend. It's non-district funded.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Oppose. All right, business office. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education authorizes the board president to execute a contract with Granite Tech Solutions to provide disaster recovery services for envision the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. It accrues to $17,312 annually pending receipt of insurance documents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the finance manager renewal pricing for 2021 school year in the amount of $31,970. Again, pending insurance documents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education here is hereby authorized to approve the agreement with Steve Robbins, CPA, for claims auditing services for the 2021 school year at an hourly rate not to exceed $90.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. A motion to approve the contracts below for health and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools and other districts for the 1920 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. We have a motion to approve the attached amendments to the following vendor agreements and they are listed below.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education establishes the reimbursable meal prices for the 2021 school year as follows. Brookside, Mohansick and Crompon will be $2.95 and the middle school and high school will be $3.15.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. We have a resolution regarding the funding of the 1920 Tax Reserve Fund, a resolution on the funding of the E R S Reserve Fund, one of the T R S Reserve Fund and a resolution for the unassigned fund balance in excess of 4%.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. A motion to approve the storage tank liability policy renewal, including terrorism insurance coverage for the 2021 school year premium in the amount of $18,093.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve the nicer general liability policy renewal for the 2021 school year, the premium in the amount of $284,238.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education authorizes the execution of the 2021 initial contract for Putna, Northern Westchester, both these services.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board approves a tax warrant notification for the 2021 school year for the towns of Yorktown, Cortland and Newcastle in the amount of $79,906,552 calculated as listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. A motion to approve the professional improvement PIPs and the CTA PIPs listed below.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Be it resolved that pursuant to the requirements of education law 3012D and Part 30 dash 2.9 of the region's rules, the following persons have completed all the required training to be recertified by this Board of Education as lead evaluators of classroom teachers for the 1920 school year. The names are listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to arrange the following special education placements as of June 22nd, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. All right, gifts, grants and donations. A motion to rescind the following Yorktown athletic gifts, grants and donations put forth on the dates below. February 24th, 2020, $20,305.87 to the Huskers Club for airfare, transportation and hotel accommodations for the varsity baseball field trip. February 3rd, 2020, $500 from the Huskers for the spring training varsity field trip. March 9th, 2020, $4,203.62 from the Huskers Club for the varsity girls lacrosse trip to Philly and February 10th, 2023, $3,037.3 cents from the Yorktown Huskers Club for hotel accommodations and activities for the Pennsylvania trip for the girls varsity lacrosse team.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ron, can you just explain why we're rescinding?
Sorry, my microphone was muted. Yes, the trips were canceled. We worked through our travel agency to refund the monies back to the families. So the trip was canceled, obviously in light of the COVID-19 situation, all traveled for overnight trips and especially any travel that required airfare was canceled.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. A motion to refund the parents the non-refundable registration fee, $225 in total for the middle school music in the parks festival trip on May 1st, 2020 that was canceled due to COVID-19.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to refund monies donated in support of the boys' lacrosse trip for JetBlue airfare tickets to Seattle, Washington that was canceled due to COVID-19 as follows. The names are listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants and donations. At Yorktown High School, $24 in the New York Life Employee Match Program and at Yorktown High School Athletics, $1,000 from the New York Community Trust for the Joseph B. Scully Memorial Scholarship Fund for senior baseball scholarships.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. We're up to board comments. What I got, Rashmi?
I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone tonight and to our retirees. I've had the pleasure and the honor to work with so many of you over the years and you will be missed and have a great summer.
Mike?
Yeah, I just, to me, this evening is always somewhat bittersweet. We say goodbye to people that have, you know, contributed enormous amounts to our district and especially this evening where we were not able to shake their hands and look them in the eye and thank them personally. I do hope that we have that opportunity as maybe Ron mentioned, hopefully sometime in November because that would certainly, they are in that and I'd like to see that in the future. But thank you to all of the retirees and also to everyone who is celebrating an anniversary this evening. Many, many fine people doing great things in our district. So thank you for that.
Cheryl?
I echo everyone's thoughts. I wanted to say thank you to our retirees. They certainly served our district well and all of our honorees tonight who had anniversaries. When you look at the tenure and how many people we have celebrating anniversaries and the tenure of our retirees, it's no wonder why our district is so strong. Our employees stay, they stay for a long time and that definitely makes us a better and a strong, very strong district. So thank you to all of them and we wish the retirees well.
Kate?
No, and I just echo everyone's sentiments too. Having three children that have gone through the district, my kids have touched a lot of the people that are retiring and just thank you and all the teachers who celebrate milestones. So you'll be missed and it is bittersweet. So we look forward to hopefully seeing you all in the fall.
Lisa?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just echo everybody else's sentiments. I also have kids in the district and all these names, both the retirees and the honorees, they're all very familiar names, whether it's been with my kids or somebody else's kids or, you know, a friend's child. It's all very special and it's what makes our district what it is. But in addition to that, you know, we're bringing close to a school year that has been quite amazing. And so in addition to the retirees and the honorees, I'd like all of the the staff and the teachers and the administration of our district to take a bow because without what they have done these past few months, our kids wouldn't have been able to complete this school year. So thank you to all of you. You know, the budget got passed, the election was held, the kids completed the year and the graduations were amazing all across the board from Mohansick to the middle school to the high school. Everything was amazing. Dr. Hatter, you at the helm was just, it was, it was. Dr. Hatter, you at the helm was just, it was, it was amazing, everything. And I've heard nothing but compliments all across the board. So thank you to all of you at Yorktown Central School District.
I echo what everybody said and I double the, what Lisa said. We're very fortunate. We have great leadership in this district. We also have great staff in this district and it was obvious from what they did during this whole time that they really care about kids. And that's what we always say is the number one most important thing if you need to care about kids and it's very obvious that they did. Our retirees are going to be sorely missed. Our anniversaries, we are so proud of you and we're so grateful for the time you've put in, so we're thankful to all of you. Ron, Tom and Lisa, we could not have gotten through this without your help. I know this is the last meeting of the year, so we want to, is it the last meeting? I've got one more.
I think we're meeting two weeks from now.
Oh, geez. Not in the last meeting.
That's technically July.
You know, we want to, we want to make sure we thank everybody for everything they have done. You've done above and beyond board. It's no longer a five-day-a-week job, so thank you all. Tom, Ron, Lisa, anything you wanted to add?
If I could, Jackie, have a moment? I'm sorry, Dr. Hatter, if I cut you off. Dr. Hatter and our Board of Education really spoke so eloquently about the contributions of those in our celebrating retirements and anniversaries tonight. I do want to put my personal thanks and appreciation for all of those celebrating this evening. Your hard work and professionalism is really what contributes to the, to the fact that Yorktown has such a fine reputation and I've enjoyed working with every one of you. For those who are returning, I look forward to our journey as we navigate through the next steps in what education will look like and to those who are retiring, I wish you well and I will hug you when I get to see you when the time is right. So thank you.
Ron, did you want anything?
No, thank you.
Tom, are you good? You've got 20 years in the district too. All right, we have the public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? Nope? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good night.